Morning, everyone. We're going to call the Montgomery County Planning Commission meeting for July 12th. To order. The record show that we have a forum with myself, Delcy, Nicole, Jonathan and John. Phil is out today. Waiting on Obed and my communication with Bob is that he was unable to drive out today, so he'll be online. With that, are there any board comments, board members in the room? Any board comments? So I just had one comment. We had our Montgomery Awards Tour yesterday with myself, staff, obviously, myself, Jonathan and Nicole. So thanks for taking the time. It was a long day. But luckily, we didn't have the humidity. We didn't have the sun.
Could have been much worse.
Yeah, could have been much worse.
Could have been dodging storms and lightning and.
But everything was well planned, well organized.
Great job.
The team did a great job keeping us to task. So it was a good, good day. And they want us. So I appreciate the time that Jonathan and both put in and of course staff. So with that, do we have approval of the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the monthly board meeting minutes for June 14, 2023? So we have second. Are there any corrections or comments by board members on the meeting minutes?
I just have a comment. I'd like to register my appreciation that the minutes now include the board discussions that we have. That was something that I thought was lacking when I got on the board and now they're in the minutes and I very much appreciate that.
Any, any other comments or corrections? Are there any negative votes to approving the four meeting minutes? Okay, then do we have any public comment or staff comment before we get started? Anybody in the room? Anybody online? And we'll move on to our first, our first order of business, which is Lower Morland Township School District Contract. And we'll go on Anne.
Hi, morning, everyone. As I think you're all aware by now, we've done a lot of these in the past years. We periodically are contacted by school districts looking to do an analysis of their enrollment and where it might be headed in the future. And we haven't found a new contract in a little while, but we were contacted by Lower Morland Township to do an analysis of their future enrollment. They're also looking to do some analysis on a proposed apartment complex that is potentially going to be in Lower Morland Township. So we have been contracted to do a school district enrollment study for Lower Morland Township School District. It is scheduled to begin on the first, and I would read all of it, but like that, I've got a printout that doesn't look like work, but it will start September 1st. The contract is for $8,874, but with the discounted community planning rate comes to $6,655. This would follow up on the report that we did initially for the school district in 2016. The school district has already signed off on it and we are bringing it for you today for your approval so that it can be approved by the commissioners for meeting next week. And we will, we will jump right into things at the beginning of this year.
All right. So before we take any comments or questions, we're reading the resolution. So before us is MCPC Resolution 237.1, short-term contract resolution, July 12, 2023. Considering contract number 657, Lower Morland Township School District, as Anne has said, length of contract is from September 1st, 2023 to November 15th, 2023. Total cost of the contract is $8,874, split 75% to the school district, 25% will be picked up by the county. Is there a motion? Second, any comments or questions from board members?
And did you say the commission did a study in 2016?
Yes.
Compared to actual, how was that? How did that study do?
I don't know. I can tell you. I worked on the study. Their growth actually exceeded that, that forecast at the time. So there were, there were some developments in play that came through. So I think they got a little more. They weren't apartment projects that I, as I recall, they were a little big housing subdivision.
You can do another study with a private consultant in the interim years, but I, that will be part of our work to review both studies, see what they said.
I'd also add that they did an RFP process for this project or study and they selected us. So we're very pleased to.
You guys responded to the RFP?
Yeah, they asked us. They invited us to.
Nice.
You know, it's interesting as, as so many of our communities are dealing with the changes in building patterns and clearly the multifamily housing that has been for a number of years now in communities. The question is, and this is where we're saying we want development. The impact of that on the schools is really important and they have to understand, you know, how to balance.
How many, how many units is the apartment? And where is it?
This is the Philmont class development.
Or is it the one?
No, it's next to the train station.
BET?
We're doing the BET.
I don't remember how many units are proposed. They've already done an analysis of how many schoolchildren they anticipate coming out of this development and as we would expect, it's, it's low because it's just one and two bedroom apartments.
Mostly one bedroom.
So, but there's still significant local pushback on the addition of so many new housing units because people think that it will bring additional burdens to local infrastructure, but especially the school.
And market rate apartments?
Yes.
That's been going on for a while. I mean, it hasn't quite around that side for a long time. I'm sorry, John.
No, actually, isn't the school district in a building mode right now? Aren't they doing like?
They're building a new high school, I believe.
I'm adapting one property.
And I think the, the visiting high school is to become the middle school.
Right.
Any other questions for Anne? Any comments or questions from staff, public? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, then we're going to do a flood study right after.
Timing is everything.
Having a lot of rain, wasn't it?
I heard there was eight inches in Redding.
Wow.
Yeah, Redding got hit and Chester County.
We're dealing with seven inches of rain.
Yeah, we have a project in Radnor that made the news. Water.
Yeah, I was, I was really surprised at the staying power of that storm all the way up to New England. Deluged everybody. All right. Well, good morning, everyone. This is a brief update on a project that's really about to get started. It's an interesting project. It's an interesting process. But as I say, we're at a point now where we're about to enter into an agreement with DEP. And so I thought it was appropriate for a update to the board. So the goal of this study is to identify and examine county level, high level stormwater and flooding issues within the watershed in order to identify locations most at risk for flooding. And then determine why, you know, what, what conditions exist that, that pose a risk to those areas. And then develop practical and implementable solutions to mitigate those impacts. And I want to be clear, this is different from an Act 167 Stormwater Management Plan. It's similar, but it's different in that we're not going to be looking at every culvert, every, you know, incidence of street flooding or whatever. We're really looking at the, some major flooding issues within, within the watershed. We will have, it's a, it's a big watershed and, and coordination is going to be important. So we're, we're proposing to have a steering committee and an advisory committee to get, to get all sorts of input. We will need a consultant. Consultant will be mainly concerned with data collection, identifying those significant problem areas based on criteria that the steering committee and the advisory committee come up with. Finding out the contributing conditions and then modeling the proposal for mitigation to confirm that, you know, the effectiveness of the proposal. Two important aspects of this, there will be an ongoing public outreach effort. This plan will likely have numerous proposals in it for specific projects in specific locations. And so and we want to keep the public informed of it. They can support the proposal with their local municipalities and their boards. There will be a cost associated with implementing this. And the second thing I want to point out is that there is money in the budget for what we're calling demonstration projects. We'll take a subset of the proposed solutions. It's not clear how many projects, probably not too many, but we want to have some money set aside to kickstart some demonstration projects. Once we get the plan completed and we say, here's, here's what we recommend. We want to start working on a few of those recommendations right away. This will help us pursue additional funding for implementation. If we can get a project under our belt or get a couple of projects started and show that we're effective. That will mean a lot to potential funders and we can get money for other projects as well. As I said, it's a large watershed, 362 square miles, 55 municipalities, four counties. The sub-basins you see listed there, each one of those would be appropriate for an Act 167 study. In fact, the Swamp Creek here on the left and the East Branch. Let's see if we can see it from this angle. And a portion of the, of the upper part have Act 167 Stormwater Management Plans. The Swamp Creek's plan was done 3005, I think, I think that cost close to $250,000. So I mean, to model and plan for the entire watershed underneath, under the Act 167 program would be enormous. Eventually, we are required to do that under these regulations, but this could be a precursor to that and we could build on that in a later phase. So you might be thinking at this point, huh, I don't remember seeing this in the work program. And you're absolutely right. It was not in the work program. It's a significant addition to the work program. And the way it came about is kind of interesting. We did not approach DEP. Municipalities did not approach DEP and say, hey, let's do a flood study. But enough people contacted Representative Joseph Webster's office and his district is like the lower portion of the Perkyomen function. Enough people contacted Joseph Webster that he went to DEP directly and proposed what's called a non-solicited grant. That means we didn't ask court. He did. And was awarded a $1 million grant for this study. Now, it's kind of interesting the way things worked out. Crystal, Bill, Chris, who used to work here in the transportation center, she retired. She's gone to work for Representative Webster and she'll be the point person in his office for us to coordinate. And we have Shane Flyner up at DEP. He, he's pretty high up there in DEP in Harrisburg. He'll be working with us as well, coordinating from his end. As I mentioned, we will be administering the grant. We'll be actively participating in plan development. The steering committee we envision will be each of the municipalities, their planning commissions and their conservation districts will be involved. And we want to get the Perkyomen Watershed Conservancy involved as well. We, I've been talking with, with them for a few months now about this project. And they're excited about it. They, they, they wanted to see the whole million dollars go immediately to mitigation projects. But I, you know, we had to explain, well, you know, if you just throw money at the problem, we may be effective, we may not. We need a plan to guide our, our actions and they see that. They, I think, will be instrumental in the public outreach effort as well. And then the steering committee will be making most of the major decisions. The advisory committee will be providing input, reviewing what we come up with, reviewing proposals and draft and so on. And they will be the municipalities, institutions, significant properties, the building, the builder sector. We want that involved as, as well. So the advisory committee is going to be huge and thank goodness we're doing, we're getting all of them. DEP required a budget, just a real vague kind of general budget in order for the contract to be developed for the grant. So we put together a rather simplistic budget and met all of their requirements. And it's very flexible. DEP has told us we can move money around within these categories if need be. But I did want to point out, we have down at the bottom, this Kickstarter grants, it's about $350,000, which isn't a lot when you think about what could be proposed. But it's something, it may be to get a project or two designed and underway once we get the, the plan completed and we have recommendations. The timeline is a three-year timeline for the non-solicited grant. So we need to get the plan, the plan done and adopted within the next 36 months. And where we are, we're at the top of the watershed, just, just sort of beginning. We have a scope and the budget prepared. DEP required us to send a letter saying, yes, we're willing to accept the million dollars that you want us to have. And as I said, there's a contract pending. We were told we'll get it this week. I haven't seen it yet, but we, we're expecting it any day now. And then once we enter into the contract, we'll begin to form those committees and make sure they're up to speed with the project details. Select a consultant and there's several good consultants in this area that they could handle a project of this size. So I've spoken just informally with a couple of them and they've provided some good guidance in developing our scope. And once we have them, we can begin with the data collection, analysis and development projects. So we're really just at the very beginning, but I wanted you all to be aware of this. We're interested in any comments or questions or input that you have. But we're just, we're just getting started. Delcy, you look like you're.
Yeah, I know. I am. I am. Lots of questions back. So we're the fiscal agent. We're going to get the million dollars?
We, we get the million dollars. We can't keep it. We have.
And no, I understand that.
But don't we keep some for the ministry?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Our costs are in there. And there's, it's going to be a little more complicated than usual because we put some costs in for the other counties because it's such a big project. We feel like their effort to collect the data and so on. Typically with an Act 167 plan, we would just say that your participation, your responsibility is going to be covered by in-kind services. You won't get any money for it. But here we just, you put a few thousand dollars aside for each county for their efforts.
Was, was, I'm trying to understand why. I understand when Crystal came here and she promoted this and I've had minimal conversations with her, but the reality is that is this a quick a project that hopefully will be faster to get through the planning process and implementation than doing the entire 167?
Yes.
That's the rationale. Okay.
Because one of the first things that we'll do with, with the steering committee is to develop, you know, just our, our criteria, I guess, for selecting, you know, what we're going to look at and really what we're not going to look at. Because we can't look at it and everything. And I think people know, like instinctively about if I said, you know, where's the, you're going to say, well, you know, Green Lane gets hammered every time. Upper, the Green Lane Marble Joint Sewer Plant gets hammered. Collegeville, you know, how many times have you seen the Perkyomen Hotels, you know, with 10 feet of water? People know where the major problems are. We may do, we'll do a little more than just ask people, but we'll identify those high level problems and then we'll focus on.
And prioritize kind of getting some of these solutions that can be identified thoughtfully, but more quickly than another plan.
And, and I said it was, the process is interesting. Because Representative Webster puts a proposal in and, and, you know, he's a politician with a lot of, he goes in a bunch of different directions and stormwater is not really, you know, his focal point. The wording of his proposal, you know, kind of use stormwater management, flood control interchangeably. So DEP was not really sure, you know, what we were posing. We've had to meet it several times to clarify that. But they did want some sort of education outreach aspect to this that would promote even, you know, onsite stormwater management, rain gardens and those types of things will help with localized flooding. They won't really help with the big flooding programs, but they wanted something in there to address that as well. So that's what the public outreach program will.
Any other questions for?
To, to put a final point on. Delcy's comment and what you said about the PWC I said on the board. Our executive directors undermined that. The problems are pretty well identified already and we would prefer to suggest that using a million dollars to do implementation. We don't have the problems. Why do we need another study that takes several hundred thousand dollars when we could just do these projects right now? And PWC does do flood control projects when we get grants and they'll be rain gardens.
What are the problems? What, what are the problems?
You just listed a couple.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We'll, we'll be looking at the high level problems and, and some of them are evident just from, you know, reading the paper. The fact that, you know, a few years ago with that summer thunderstorm that just hit the upper part. Green Lane was, was badly flooded. The upper Montgomery, excuse me, the Montgomery. I will say this right. Green Lane Marble Sewer Plant and their pump station, their pump station was heavily damaged. Flooding all along the central portion. There was a house that was lifted off its foundation near Pike Road. Collegeville floods tremendously. So people know those problem areas, but they might not know the cause. And without knowing, you know, the cause beyond saying, well, impervious surface and intense storms. Without knowing specifics, it's really hard to develop a solution that's going to be effective. So that's really what we'll be looking at is, is what's the best way to address, you know, this problem in this area?
So so there's not a clear cut understanding as to what's causing the flooding. There's some.
Well, it's, there's a lot of different things that cause the Perkyomen to flood. Collegeville happens to be at the bottom of the watershed. So if you have a little problem here and a little problem there and a little problem there and there's a big rainstorm, there's a big problem right here at the bottom of the watershed because everyone hasn't controlled whatever's going on.
And it, it. I'm starting. I don't know the area well as others. Is it a culmination of just the fact that we're getting, there's more, whether it's more impervious or whether it's just more, more intense storms? But is there, is there constricting? Something happened along the watershed that has constricted water flow?
Well, it's more to Jonathan's point, there's several places where, you know, some major tributaries come in. Swamp Creek comes in, the East Branch enters the, the main stem, you know, relatively close. And those are large drainage areas. So the timing of the, the stormwater flows from those, you know, could converge a little bit downstream in the main stem and that's what's causing the flooding. So if we were able to have some sort of distributed, and I'm just sort of talking off the top of my head here, but if we had some sort of distributed control methods within one watershed that's, that affected the timing of those flows, we could have the Swamp Creek's flows go through and then these branch flows comes through and they don't meet at the same time. So they don't cause increased flow. But we need to, to look at that to know, like, is that feasible?
I got that. I'm just not having a more of a high level conversation. I don't understand what, what, what people think are the causes. Obviously, the study will come in on some of those.
There's, there's a difference. People know that there's, they know what the problems are. They know where the flooding occurs, but they might not have the specifics of.
They know the result of the.
Yes.
What you see.
They might think they know what the Band-Aid is, but they probably don't know what the solution is.
All too often we see Band-Aids being applied and then they get blown out because.
The root issues. And this is, am I correct in saying that the Perkyomen is the largest tributary to Skoko?
Yes. And it's the largest watershed in, in the county.
Yes, it is humongous. And over the past 40 years, the changes in land use are spectacularly large. So.
Just, just if I could go off on a tangent a little bit, because this used to be my practice area, one of my practice areas. You know, developments, residential, commercial, old stormwater basins. And there's typically a riser pipe in there that makes sure the basins fill up. And then when they're full, the excess water goes down the riser pipe. When they don't fill up, sort of it goes into the groundwater. A lot of times the riser pipes fail and they tip over or they have holes in the bottom. Nobody does that. So now the water is directed into this basin and it goes right out. It doesn't stay there like it is. And so we, as I've been saying to DEP, you should probably figure out a funding program that allows homeowners associations, whatever, to fix this so they work as they are supposed to. Maybe that'll be applied.
That, that could be one of the, that could be one of the solutions.
I'm just a quick question on timing. So assuming that this contract comes through within the next week or two, you know, just kind of forecasting forward, when would you hope that the steering committee, the advisory committee, you've got a consultant on board? When would you hope that those kind of first steps are, you know, are, are pulled together?
Well, as soon as the contract is signed, we'll, we'll, we have a list of everybody we need to contact. We're just holding off on the contracts. We'll form those committees quickly and we'll schedule a, a first meeting. And one of the first things we'll do is start working on the consultant. So I think we'll have a consultant on board within, you know, a couple of months. It takes a while to get contracts and because everything, every part of the contract needs to be vetted by DEP under this. They, they need, like they needed our EIN numbers so they could see if we're physically responsible and they needed that for the, the other counties and they'll need that for the contractor and so on. So there's a little bit of an administrative delay, but we'll, we'll, we want to get started on this as soon as possible. I mentioned Crystal, we're fortunate to have her because this is kind of like her. She's retired.
I know Crystal well. She has.
She calls me up every, every other week, you know, how we doing? Where are we? Why hasn't this happened yet? You know, so I, she'll, she'll help drive.
You know, she worked in, she worked in governmental entities. She should understand it. So you just can't step outside of the, of the, of the process or the governmental entity process and all of a sudden think that things are just going to change.
She understands it. The other point, she understands that. It's just that this is something that she's passionate about this.
What, what is the impact on your section?
Yeah.
I mean, what did we have on our work plan?
Well, Scott's working on that.
Oh, yeah, I'll comment briefly. One, one of our goals is to add an additional staff person to environmental. And that's partially also tied to a reorganization addressing sustainability, which is a proposal that we're working with the administration on, which is still in the discussion stages. So I can't really say exactly how it'll turn out, but we have, we have our idea how it should take turn out. But the idea is that we have a, a stronger setup within the county to address the sustainability between not just planning, but our public properties and assets and infrastructure. And in doing that and in taking on this study as well as the other work, the justification for a new person and part of that administration be, will help kickstart the salary of, of a new person. That's my proposal.
And we hope that the position would come in at, at more than just an entry level, but somebody with some stormwater experience that just is dying to work for a county government.
And we, I will correct Drew. We actually do have it in the work program for 23. We were last fall.
I'm sorry. You're right. I do remember that. I, it was a late addition.
Anything you said earlier in the year, last year.
But thank you for asking about capacity, Delcy. That is an concern.
Good. Any other questions for Drew before we let him go?
We got.
Put on your boots. You're wellie. Get your wellies on.
Oh no, I think you might need hip waders.
We're going to move on to our next agenda item, which is a continuation of what we started last month on the background information for Moncar 2050. So I'm starting off and. Give it a second.
You're back again, Anne.
It's, it's an interview.
This is so awesome. It's taking a while.
It's a big file.
Okay, uh, so I'll get started. Uh, if you were paying attention last month, you've already seen these couple of initial slides. That Scott and Chloe went through. Uh, so I'm going to make it uh, the clip notes version pretty brief, but uh. We are presenting the next four topics in our trend reports to you today. Um, these are uh, to be part of our Monaco twenty fifty efforts. Our background reports are going to be short and sweet. They're going to look a little bit like this uh, when all is said and done. Four page documents. With a lot of background information that we might have put in a larger document to be kept online, especially those that are maps. These are the topics we're presenting today. Economic development, which will be uh, presented jointly by Mike Markowitz and Chloe, who is living in from vacation. I saw you, you up there on the box. So thank you for joining us today, Chloe. Uh, environmental systems, infrastructure and utilities. And help. And then in September, we will be wrapping up with land use and government and community services. Um, so again, I mentioned the online B I S hub that is still a, a project we are working on. We do have a website with our survey available for people to take here. Chipping away at getting respondents every day. Again, I've noticed that we've got one more response, so. Someone's paying attention to this. And uh, with that, I will pass things. I don't know if, Mike, are you going first or slower? I will turn things over to Mike. Uh, talk about economic development. He's got some really interesting information to share.
Good morning. Mike Markowitz, Community Planning System Manager. And yes, Chloe and I will be talking about the economic development section, the background. We broke this down into subsections on job growth, key industries, vacancy, downtowns. Work force and job locations and commute. Um, we looked at annual growth and one interesting thing is that employment grew at such a faster rate than the population. Um, over the past twenty years, essentially we broke it at twenty nineteen to uh, control for the best. The pandemic and then the projections going forward are that this structure will hold, although both. Um, would grow at, at a slower annual growth rate. Then we looked at new business formation and technically this is based on. Uh, the number of applications for employee identification numbers from the IRS that tracks with eventual business formation. And it's interesting to see that there was a modest uptick. In applications around twenty seventeen. Um, but then during the pandemic, it really took off. So it's generally accepted that the pandemic had a lot to do with that. Um, retail was reinventing itself, um, firms were adapting. You know, it's possible that, that's some firms were replaced because they went out of business and then new businesses sprang up to take the place. Um, and I will say from the reading I've done, um, nationally, opinions are divided whether this trend is going to. Continue or whether it's more of a blip um, from the pandemic. That will revert to the norm. Um, but it'll be interesting to follow in the years that come. Uh, we did take a look at key industries. I'm not going to get into the nitty gritty of this slide. Uh, there's just too much data. Um, but I will highlight some of the facts we found more interesting on the slides that follow. Um, we, we did look at all twenty N A I C S codes, uh, North American Industrial Classification System. And we looked at wages and employees, how concentrated they are in the county compared to that of the nation. And the percent change. So the top four industries in terms of number of jobs. Are healthcare and social assistance, professional scientific and technical services. Retail trade and manufacturing. And one of the things we found interesting about healthcare is that there is a nineteen percent growth. Um, so that ranked four out of all twenty. Of the classifications, professional scientific and technical services with, which includes things like lawyers, accountants, architects. Um, it had, it was the most concentrated in Montgomery County compared to that of the nation. And, and essentially that's just um, a fraction of the employment in that classification. Um, over the total employment in the county compared to a similar ratio for the nation. Uh, for retail trade, uh, one thing that's notable is although we have a lot of jobs in it, it does not pay well. Um, it's an average salary of thirty-nine thousand dollars. Like seventeenth out of twentieth. And then with manufacturing. It ranks high, uh, still a number of jobs despite the fact that it's declining. And has been declining for decades nationwide and wages are good, um, an average of one hundred three thousand dollars. So rank seven out of twenty. Um, another thing you can't really see at the bottom of the screen there is that there was a five percent contraction. So it, it does continue to contract. And it also contracted statewide, although the rate was about half that.
We'll just, on that manufacturing number, there, um, there's a contraction, but the salaries are going up?
Uh, we're not necessarily saying that they're going up. We're just stating that um, they rank seventh out of twenty.
No, but I think that would be a really interesting number because that would show us.
Yeah.
The types of manufacturing that I think we need to look into that.
That's a good point. Yeah.
Mike, I'm a little slow with these percentages. This is all Montgomery County specific percentages?
It is. Yeah. So then, oh, sorry.
And what was the concept was, so I get jobs, I get wages, what's concentration?
Oh, it's concentration. Yeah. So that's um, a ratio of the number of jobs in that classification. So for example, the number of jobs in healthcare. Uh, compared to the total jobs in Montgomery County. Um, and then you take that ratio and you compare it to the ratio nationwide. So ratio nationwide of jobs in healthcare compared to. Um, the total number of jobs nationwide. So the, the number is essentially higher. So the concentration.
Tonight's time in, hi, everybody. That Mike's doing a really good job explaining it, but if that, if you don't want to think about ratios, it just means we have. A whole lot of jobs in that sector more than other places have. So like professional scientific and technical services. There's a lot of jobs in Monco in that area, way more than other places have relative to their total employment.
Yeah. So this actually doesn't um. Tell you what the national figures are, but um, it, it looks at the total ranking within the county. So. Um, and then some other industries that we thought were interesting were finance and insurance. Um, the concentration is number two in the county and wages are number three. Um, construction, uh, there is a thirty-four percent growth. And that ranked third out of all the industries in the county. Um, management of companies and enterprises have the highest wages and the highest growth. Um, so that was thirty-eight percent growth. And that's compared to seven percent growth in Pennsylvania. Um, transportation warehousing we have on here. Um, and we thought it was interesting that concentration was so low um, out of all the industries just. It was nineteen. Um, we've been hearing a lot about the development of distribution centers and Amazon warehouses. And we know that there, there's been a lot of such development in Lehigh Valley. Um, Delaware County has.
Central B I S.
Right. And uh, it's just not happening as much in, in Monaco. So, um, then we're also looking at the vacancy. And this looks at the period twenty thirteen to twenty twenty-five. And the data points that are labeled there are the most recent actual historic data. And the data points to the right of that are projections. So office vacancy is twelve point five percent. Industrial is five point three percent. And retail four point two. Um, so you can see during the pandemic, uh, the rates rose particularly for office and um, also for industrial. Um, but one important point is that leases play into this data. So it would actually be much higher. Um, if you factored in the fact that there are some leases ongoing. Um, where the, the tenants probably don't intend to renew, or if they do intend to renew. Um, they're likely to do um, what we've been seeing happening around the region, which is renew for a lower amount of space.
Yeah, we just visited yesterday, uh. Large employer in Concha Hocken. What was that, Steve? What was the?
Five hundred people out of the capacity of sixteen hundred or something.
Yeah, they, they expected to have sixteen hundred people and they had office space for them, but five hundred people come to work every day.
Right. Yeah. And, and some data from uh, Castle Systems uh, says that reasonably twenty-five to fifty percent. Of workers are in office, offices these days.
Yeah.
Um, and also we've been seeing some interesting things. We've been seeing um, a flight to quality. So there's class A, B and C space. Uh, with A having the most amenities, being the newest and commanding the highest rents. Um, but given that there's been a drop off in demand. Um, lease rates have gotten more attractive, more appealing and maybe out of desperation um, for office. Um, property managers to keep their tenants in the space, they've been lowering rents and, and places that have uh. Uh, formerly occupied maybe class B or C space have, have reoccupied to class A space. So that's also, there have been, um. There is definitely a great variation in vacancy between class A, B and C space, lower vacancy, of course, for class A, higher for class C. Um, and that's true reasonably as well. So closer in to Philadelphia and with the newer office case, Concha Hocken vacancy rates are much lower. Um, that tends to be class A space also. On the other hand, once you get to class C space and area in like the Pottstown um, area. The vacancy rates are as high as twenty-five.
And I attended a Philly Biz Now um, State of the Suburbs event that I think some M C P C staff attended as well and, and we had some discussion on office as well as the industrial market and. Uh, you know, I would agree that the trends that they talked about and what I've been seeing, you know, the Philly suburb market is very, still very strong when you compare it to other parts of the country in terms of. Office vacancies and issues and it seems like this market has, has done a good job of pivoting. Um, they do seem to be pretty successful in resigning leases and, and keeping people or moving them into other space. Or repurposing space, you know, life sciences is taking over a lot of empty office spaces, you know, with conversion. So there are a lot of. Changes happening, but generally, um, you know, the, the market here is better than a lot of other areas in the country.
And then we also um, summarized our tools for strong downtowns and strong uh, economic development environments. Of course, walkability is a key. Uh, outdoor dining, which um, really expanded dramatically out of necessity during the pandemic. Um, has uh, retained its staying power and, and continued to thrive, which has really added a lot to the. Um, character of downtowns and the, and the activity there. Uh, retail and town centers and village centers um, has its own characters. And so. Um, municipalities should recognize that. So there are places where maybe local businesses have more of an opportunity to thrive. Uh, where retail might fill niche markets, uh, rather than marketing um. Uh, in large volume, you know, like a Target or a Walmart. Um, they're an opportunity to have pop-up or experiential retail and experiential meaning it's, it's often a place where. Uh, people are encouraged to hang out and engage in activity rather than just go and look at what's on the shelves. Um, anchor uses have played a major role in the success of downtowns like Ambler. Uh, live theater and live music has been a big part of this, uh, in Keswick and Pottstown and Ardmore. Um, plenty of other places. Uh, public space and public realm is critical. So whether you're talking about a town square and place to hold activities and municipalities to engage in programming. Or the public realm, including the, the streetscape. Um, these are all things that affect um, the character in the sense of place. Street trees and greenery um, have an impact on public health. Um, and street trees can reduce the heat island effect, which is especially pronounced in our town centers. Um, and the street trees and greenery, you can also establish a link to uh, downtown greenings. And this is just um, an image from the model T O D ordinance. Uh, with some best practices for downtown development. Uh, business district management is also something that's very important, whether you're talking about business improvement districts. Um, special services district like on City Avenue, uh, or a main street organization like an Ambler. Um, and they, and they address a range of concerns, including cleanliness, um, marketing. Uh, crime in some places, uh, as well as just general organization. Uh, and infrastructure improvements uh, for redup finalization. Uh, transit access and orientation is important to encourage and it's especially well fitted to these downtown centers. It all also has an impact on um, public health and active living. And encouraging new land uses is important to do, whether that's encouraging business incubators and maker space. Um, or alternatives to traditional retail, um, breweries, distilleries, that type of thing. Uh, education and healthcare has always played an important role in downtowns. Um, but we expect that to, their role to grow uh, as time passes, especially with the changing situation in, in the retail sector. Um, also with healthcare, um, this appears to be something that is expanding its presence in a lot of these downtowns. And part of that apparently has to do with the increase in outpatient procedures. Um, outpatient surgery. Um, so you're seeing more uh, urgent cares and places like that um, around our downtowns. And many of these tools that I've covered in the last two slides reinforce placement, which is. So now I will turn it over to Chloe. For the next section.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Um, you're gonna still need to advance the slides for me, so don't go too far. Um, okay, I'm going to talk just briefly about the resident workforce and a little bit about commute and the locations within the county of the jobs. County residents are about six percent of the state population, but earn nine percent of the income earned by workers in the state and that. Is likely due in part to the very high education levels of the county res, of county residents, which had. Already in the year two thousand, um. There were a, a larger percent of residents with a graduate or professional degree. Even than the, the statewide, statewide there are now, but that has increased dramatically over the past twenty years in terms of percentage of residents. And similarly, or you know, the converse is that. The percentage of residents who never graduated high school has gone way down over the past twenty years. And. Uh, so statewide. Oh, nationally, the change in. The, the number, percentage of the population who's not a high school grad has also gone down, but not nearly as much as it has in Montgomery County. Can. There's.
This doesn't take, what about technical schools?
Um, this is census data and so I believe if there's. At the, an equivalent degree, like in the equivalent, equivalent of associate's degree, it would be counted with, with that. But it's a good point that plenty of people can earn an excellent living with a technical degree. Um, which is part, part of why we didn't dwell on all those middle categories so much. So you have, you know, looking at people who did not graduate from high school have, of course. Much more difficult time seeking job prospects and often people with a graduate or professional degree are top income earners, although not always.
So how do we get that information?
Um, we have discussed that a little bit internally in terms of trying to reach out to. Um, some of the high schools in the region who track where their graduates go next and what they're doing. Um, we haven't pursued that. I mean, the easily available daily data is from the U S census, which only provides the categories given here.
This was presented that the jobs for manufacturing were high paying, so. You could make a direct connection to those, that workforce is coming out of, potentially coming out of. Uh, tech schools and that information's not, not represented in this, in this slide. So. I mean, it would be something. Uh, to see that correlation, we could, I think there is a advantage, there's an advantage in tracking. Uh, people that are going through tech schools.
I agree. See what information we can get.
So I think that's something that should be added to this. So I think that's something that should be added to this analysis.
Makes sense.
Ready for me to
Yeah, it's gonna actually pop up a couple circles, and then you can go ahead to the next slide, I think. Just noting the change over twenty years. Go ahead. Okay, this slide just shows the unemployment rate. That's people in Montgomery County, residents of the county who are actively looking for work, but do not currently have a job. Um, so the top line there is Philadelphia, the steady line is Pennsylvania, and then those three lines are um Montgomery County is the second lowest pretty much across this whole um chart, which goes from two thousand four through twenty twenty-three. Um, just, you know, all the everywhere saw this huge spike in unemployment at the onset of COVID, but generally speaking, Montgomery County's employment unemployment rate is very low. Go ahead, Mike. Okay, this map is showing every county to which there are at least five thousand workers either coming to or going from Montgomery County for their jobs. Um, so that's all these surrounding counties, and in every single case, it turns out that more people are coming to Montgomery County for work than there are workers going from Montgomery County to the other county for work, including Philadelphia. So from the beginning of the existence of the city of Philadelphia, there were always more workers going from Montgomery County to Philadelphia and vice versa. That trend reversed in twenty eleven. There are now more workers who come from Philadelphia to work in Montgomery County than vice versa. Uh, you can go ahead to the next slide. And this is related to that as well as to the very first slide Mike showed. Well, I'll just remind you. Um, that slide showed that the number of jobs in that county has been increasing faster than the population and is predicted to continue to increase faster than population. So there's jobs here. Those, there are more and more jobs every year, and there's also more and more population, but it's not um increasing as fast. So this slide shows, the top line shows the percent of jobs within the county that are held by residents. So in two thousand two, that was about forty-five percent of jobs, and in twenty twenty, that was down to thirty-eight percent of jobs held by residents. And
What's the raw number? Forget about the percentage.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. So there's about, it's actually, the numbers are nice kind of round numbers. There's about half a million jobs in the county. Um, about two hundred thousand are held by residents of the county, and about three hundred thousand come in from elsewhere.
No, I got that.
Mm-hmm.
But you're saying twenty twenty is whatever, thirty-eight percent or something?
It was forty-five percent.
What's that raw number? And in twenty and twenty-two thousand two, it was forty-five percent. What's that number?
Yes, so the raw numbers have actually also decreased, uh, but I don't have them at my fingertips.
Say that again?
The raw numbers have also decreased, like the number of workers who have had jobs in the county, but not as much as a percentage. I don't have those numbers at my fingertips. I can get back to you, though. I do have those.
Because the percentage is one thing, but that's based off of the the split between other people coming in from other counties or other locations of the county to work. It has the number of
For
County residents working in the county, has that number, the actual raw number stayed stagnant, or has that reduced also?
Right. The base number that the forty-five percent is based on is different than the base number that the thirty-eight percent is based on. So what's that?
Yep. I'll get back to you.
Good.
Uh, you can go to the next slide. Mike. All right. So this is showing the locations of jobs in the county. So um, this is based on census blocks, which is the census's smallest uh geography. Uh, so the darkest red had are showing between a thousand and two thousand jobs, and then the kind of brighter red is showing greater than two thousand jobs in that census block. Um, census blocks are not an ideal uh geography to look at, but it's what we have. Uh, and it does show where the concentrations of jobs are. It's no surprises here. It's mostly places we're pretty aware of. And you can go to the next slide, Mike, because we just took a little look here at this top two uh most concentrated job locations and what and overlaid those onto the housing prices. So you can see um, anywhere with with kind of a brown background color has a median housing price of over four hundred thousand dollars. And in a lot of cases, that's where those higher concentrations of jobs are. This may partially explain why we see um more people coming into the county for work, because housing prices are expensive. Okay, and this is my last slide, just showing where job growth is predicted. This is done by D V R P C. They predict out to twenty fifty um, where they think there it's going to be the greatest job growth, and this is in terms of percentage. So it's looking at the number of jobs there now and the predicted number of jobs there in twenty fifty, and the highest percentage growth is predicted to be out west and um the total job numbers where they're already strong is predicted to continue to be strong, and in Concha Hawkins case, to still grow significantly. So thanks for your attention and your interest. There were so many interesting facts here. Mike and I do have time for a few additional questions or comments, and we're happy to slide back to any of the slides we showed, if there's something that you want to look at again. Um, or if you have any discussion on the topic.
I can address Steve's question. I have the data here. It was a hundred eighty-six thousand in twenty twenty that lived and worked in the county in nineteen, in two thousand two, it was two hundred and four thousand. So both the raw number and
Was it a hundred eighty-six, essentially?
Uh, yeah. We had a hundred ninety on the slide. I don't know what the discrepancy is there, but so.
That's those, these numbers that we used were primary jobs, counting only one job per person. So um there's a few different data points available. Uh, if people hold multiple jobs, you could count multiple jobs.
Like fifteen thousand, roughly? And the D V R P C job growth location, what's their criteria for for determining that, like, you know, out in the far west part of the county, their job growth is thirty percent or greater? What's the deciding factor there?
I'm gonna leave that one to Scott or Ann.
Say uh say again, I'm sorry.
Well, you look at the map and all the way out in the western part of the county, you have uh the forecasted job growth is thirty percent or greater. Why would they make that determination?
I think I think partially because there are lower job counts, so percent is going to be distorted uh in terms of the raw number wouldn't be as noticeable um created in the internal or the eastern municipalities. Um, but there is growth. They, in the past, they have tied some of the econo, the the employment data to population gains, but they've moved away from that as uh I don't know, a hundred percent, but to some degree. Um, and so uh, that's the ba- basic rationale. But I don't have the
Would we think that a lot of the decrease in jobs um absolute number of jobs, the question Stephen was asking, was the change in the um manufacturing, the pharmaceutical companies that laid off so many people during that period of time?
It's possible. Like, if you if you look at the total jobs, they did go up. So they went from like four fifty plus to uh almost, we're almost back up to five hundred thousand um in twenty twenty, we were probably, actually, before, then it went down again. So right now, we're probably lower than we were in twenty twenty, okay, pre-co.
Yeah, I remember there was a period of time there where we, you know, so many of that that patch of companies were laying off five thousand here, five thousand. They are moving headquarters and stuff like that. I just wondered how much of it was in that high-tech pharma, you know, job.
I thi- I think in the industry stuff, we saw that those aren't, you know, there has been a lot of shifting, but it hasn't been a a a drain, like it's just gone different places.
Mike, can you go back to the um the big spreadsheet one? Or maybe the overall growth? No, keep going. This one. So this um overall job numbers have gone way up, the total number of jobs, but you can see the right-hand column here shows growth and what industries are growing. And if you're asking about pharma, um, it's growth that we're seeing. It's that's
Okay.
Professional and technical was nine point four percent.
Growth, yeah. But overall job numbers are way, way up, really have grown a lot, lots of jobs.
Other questions for Mike and Chloe? Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Good morning, everybody. My name is John Lushan. I'm the Environmental Planning Assistant Manager, and today I will be talking about topics related to environmental systems, which is kind of a made up word, because as you have heard, the environmental section, we cover a broad range of topics. Trees, water, sewage, energy, um, you, you know, and that broad umbrella that we call sustainability. So as we were discussing how to best frame this, how to best discuss this for the comp plan, um, we came up with in our division, I am covering environmental systems, which is basically all the natural environment and how it interacts with humans. So that gives us that broad topic to be able to talk about things like our environmental infrastructure, stormwater management, flooding, um, the identification of vulnerable populations, especially those most vulnerable to climate change, and then the integration of sustainability and resiliency into our communities, planning projects and our capital projects. So now you may be wondering, I usually get up here and talk about energy and some of that other stuff. Uh, Drew is going to be covering that. He is, he's still in the room. So if there are questions, I may point to Drew to help me out on some stormwater flooding, and then he'll do the same for energy and things of that nature.
We just talk about?
We can talk about anything you want to talk about. I just got back from the beach. We want to talk about the beach again. So, first off, we we're talking about these trends. We're talking about these issues that our community is facing um and the things that are going on, and we need to address moving from our last comprehensive plan into our next. Um, we would be very remiss if we did not talk about our environmental infrastructure, our plants, our animals, our water, all the things that provide the services that we require that are environmentally um related. So, you know, the impacts that these have on our lives, air quality, water quality, stormwater management, species habitat, climate change mitigation. Um, you know, the, in our most recent study, the force of the Montgomery County sequester over two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seven thousand metric tons of carbon every year. You know, that's not something we see. We see the value of rain gardens. We see the value of stormwater management, but looking at the value of our natural environment and the things that it can do and that it does for us. Um, do you think air quality has become a bit more of an issue over the past six months? It is on the radar now. My kids look at our Google and it says what the air quality is, and my eight-year-old's like, that can't go outside today, bud. It's like, air quality is bad. You know, we need to be aware of all of these issues and the things that they do for us. Um, one of the things that you know, that we are threatened, our environmental infrastructure is threatened by climate change and development pressures. We had a long conversation. You can see the type of development that we're seeing, then over twenty-three thousand housing units, the seventeen million square feet of non-residential construction. We had a conversation about this because when you say development, not all development is bad. That's not what we want to say. There are development pressures maybe to put developments where it's not the most environmentally sound areas, talking about maybe flood plains, talking about, um, you know, where are we going to expand into our natural areas? Or are there development pressures to build in a way that is not sustainable? How can we get our buildings to be built more sustainable, both stormwater, energy conservation, T O Ds, all these things that we talk about all the time? So how do we balance protecting our environmental infrastructure and our, um, you know, and our development that we would like to see? One of the things that, as we were going through this, um, you know, those those who are running the comp plan process are like, we need numbers. We just saw the last presentation. That was a lot of charts. I sat next to Drew and be like, man, I wish we had cool charts like that. One of the issues that we are facing, that our community is facing, is how do we measure the value of all of these things? How do we measure quantifiably, whether it's in square feet, whether linear yards, numbers, to be able to talk to our decision makers and say, this is why we need to do this, because there is this value. And we can chart the number of trees that we have and the, you know, the those sorts of issues. So that is one of the challenges that we are facing. I gave you a highlight over here. If you have not had a chance to check out Abingdon Township's tree canopy study, it is amazing. It is super awesome. That is a professional designation of super awesome. And the fact that they were able to do a study um where they could quantify the value of their tree canopy, it's interactive with heat maps with a slider of showing you where the tree canopy is. It is something that we would love to see more and more of, and I think that is an important trend moving forward of, how do we quantify the environmental infrastructure and the value that it brings us?
Do you know how they did that?
Uh, they hired a consultant.
Yeah.
That's the thing. The data is available. Um, it's just so time-consuming to go on to R G I S and to measure, you know, to outline the tree canopies, to do the surveying, walk in the streets. It is doable. It is just expensive and time-intensive. So I commend Abington for, you know, taking that. So, we've talked about stormwater management a bit already today. Um, you know, we are, and I think the issues that we are seeing, we know we are getting more storm events. We are seeing more annual totals. But as we saw this week, as we've seen over the past year and the past couple of years, we're really struggling with the intensity of the storms. We are getting inches and inches of rain in shorter periods of time, which our systems are not capable of handling. Um, our goal, obviously, through all this, and you saw my, we're going to talk about flooding in a second, so we'll see where this leads to. The goal is always to replicate redevelopment hydrology. Get the water from the sky into the ground and get it there so it can be clean, so it's available for drinking water, so we can fill our streams in a manner that is, you know, healthy and that we would like to see. Um, we are, our communities and the county itself are seeing more and more state and federal regulations that are requiring stormwater management. This is a good thing. This is a very important thing, both for the health of our streams and for the health of our communities, but it is not cheap. Um, once again, the data is difficult to pull together. You may have heard that we're working with the West Higgin watershed. Um, you may, you know, we might have talked about it once or twice, the work that we're doing, which is amazing work. Um, Drew is leading a phenomenal effort, and we are getting closer to completion. But through that work, we were able to study those communities a little bit more. Um, in twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, those municipalities spent three point seven million just on M S four compliance. That's not their P R Ps, that's not their T M D Ls, that's not the other requirements that involve the alphabet soup. That's just for their municipal stormwater. Um, and arranging annually from one, five hundred dollars annually to over a million dollars annually. And that was the same community. So it's, it can range, you know, varied from community, community, and from year to year, but it is an expense, and it is something that is putting a strain on our municipalities. Um, but it's something that we need to be doing. Um, some municipalities, one of the trends that we're Some municipalities, one of the trends that we're, that our municipalities are exploring are municipal stormwater fees. Currently, there are twenty-seven municipalities that have implemented municipal stormwater fees throughout the state. You know, and that may range for a, the study I saw, for a normal property or the average property, it's anywhere between sixty and a hundred and thirty dollars annually for that stormwater fee. So, so far, twenty-seven in the state have adopted it. I can, I do not know, but anecdotally, I would say there are probably at least twenty-seven municipalities in the county that are thinking about it because they need to figure out how do we pay for the stormwater management. Because one of the issues that we're dealing with, and that is becoming more and more prevalent throughout the county, is flooding. Now, we are seeing flooding because of those development pressures, because of climate change, and because of, as John pointed out, we have outdated stormwater facilities. The facilities that we have are not prepared to handle what is coming and what is happening, either due to lack of maintenance, because they've been in the ground for so long, or they were not designed to handle the types of storms that we're getting. So we are seeing increased flooding in the flood plains. But the scarier thing that I think that we are seeing is we are seeing flooding in areas outside of the flood plain where people are not prepared for it. You know, if you have flood insurance, you're like, okay, I know this may happen. I hope it doesn't, but I at least have, there's a mechanism to make me aware. We are seeing intense storms dropping inches and inches of rain in microbursts in small areas where these homes, where these neighborhoods, where these communities are not prepared for this type of event. And that's what we're going to be dealing with now, and we will be dealing with moving forward. The flooding has a myriad of effects. Hurricane Ida, our health department, there was four hundred and fifty-two water rescues and four resident deaths from that storm. Now, that is just one storm that we've seen. We are going to continue to see those types of human loss and emergency events. We have damage to homes, possessions, increased flood insurance costs for the homes that are in there, decreased home values for those that are being flooded. And then just an increased cost to make buildings and communities more resilient. We use, through our hazard mitigation plan, which has recently been adopted. We used FEMA data. You know, we have this heat map of our structures built within a hundred-year floodplain. These are the ones that are most likely to be affected by flooding. We have had six hundred and seventy-seven repetitive loss structures. That means they've been flooded out and have received damage not once, but multiple times. And the flood insurance program over, has paid over a hundred, well, about a hundred million dollars in flood insurance payments to those six hundred and seventy-seven repeated loss events. You know, the damage is incredible, and that's just repetitive loss. We're not talking about Ida and some of the flooding that's occurred outside of the flood plain for homes that have not had flood insurance.
Do you have any data that shows housing or structures that have been abandoned or removed at, because of damage and not rebuilt?
The most we have are the buyouts that have occurred through FEMA or AECs who applied to have their home purchased and demolished. We don't have data on just folks that have abandoned their structure because of damage. In some way or another, I'm not sure. There's a lot of that. I do know the process for a buyout is very, it takes years, in some cases. In some cases, the resident just gets fed up with waiting and they take a loss, but I don't have numbers in this.
It would be interesting to understand, like, the flooding and what it's doing for population, redistribution of the population or abandonment of areas that are no longer being utilized for what their original land use was because of the flooding.
I think it would be interesting. I think it would be, I think we would be able to do it, and Drew, chime in. Coming out of Hurricane Ida, there was a tremendous amount of relocations. There was a tremendous amount of buyouts. I think we would probably be able to work with the Office of Emergency Management, Joanna, and maybe get an idea of, from that large singular event, where those people are moving. Are they moving back? Have they moved? Where have they moved to? Obviously, it wouldn't be all-inclusive, you know, but it would be an interesting case study to get an idea of where those people are moving. We are also doing a much deeper dive with our board of assessment data, looking at climate change. And we may be able to pull from that more of what type of buildings have been abandoned that are in the floodplain and start to get in a, you know, to try to get to the root of that idea of, of who's just cutting out properties.
Because, you know, if that's the most extreme effect of the flooding is that the structure or whatever's on that property that's been damaged, whether it's once, twice, or several times, that people just stop utilizing the structure or they, they get a buyout from FEMA. And, but that would, that gives us some indication as to if flooding continues, or if it gets, if these storms get worse and we can't control the, or the flooding not controlled or somehow mitigated, then you would, that's the areas that you would point to that are going to expand out. Those would be the first places we would look to see more population displacement because of the flooding.
It would be interesting to look at that. What, I, I think what we'd find is that the average person, because of the way flood insurance is subsidized and programmed and FEMA has for paying the damages, by and large, I would say most people fix up their homes and move back. Where we, where we would not see that is the, in the, called the marginal area. Here, people are low income and that's the only place that they can, you know, afford to live, like the apartments down here in ours town that got flooded out. They go somewhere else, but I'm not sure where they, I'm not sure where to go because they, they, they can't afford the flood insurance or they've lost everything. But, you know, with the flooding, and they don't have the means to, you know, to repair and go to rebuild. So it would be interesting to look at that. I think we can probably
That was a good segue into the next trend, because these are, you know, the questions you ask are the questions that are, we are asking and our communities are asking. Now, what are our vulnerable, most vulnerable populations throughout the county? And this idea, the idea is that we have to ensure that all populations of the county are being accounted for and are being included when we are discussing, you know, our environmental systems, our environmental infrastructure, and especially the effects of climate change. We have, this is one where we do have a tremendous amount of census data. For the purpose of this, I thought it would be interesting. On this map, we took our climate change potential vulnerability analysis. The blue is the areas that are most vulnerable to climate change. And I looked, did we use DVR PCs, indicators of potential disadvantage as a popular, you know, the vulnerable population portion of that analysis? And what are some of the, the populations, the percentages of populations? Why are the people here so vulnerable? You know, you're, you see low income. You see twenty-four percent disabled in the census tract that's included in our most vulnerable areas. You know, we see the idea of, we're getting the representation of foreign-born and limited English proficiency. We are, we're seeing racial minorities, Hispanic origins. You know, fifty-eight percent female. I always, whenever I, we use the indicators of potential disadvantage, the idea is that because you are either a female or you have limited English proficiency, it does not mean that you are disadvantaged. It is the equation of you have a higher chance of being disadvantaged if you are one of their nine categories. Now, we are seeing older adults who are having difficulty with heat, with flooding. You know, but we're also seeing, there is youth. Somewhere. It did not show up. But we, one of the disadvantages are a young population. Just like I talked about my eight-year-old out in the heat today at foot, you know, at flag football camp with the air quality. You know, these are the, you know, these people are going back to homes that do not have air conditioning, that are poorly ventilated. You know, so these are issues. We need to understand who these populations are so we are better able to give and help find the solutions that help them. And then this is part of that, kind of the feel-good part of it, because our communities are understanding of these issues. They do understand that there has to be a commitment to sustainability. There has to be a commitment to resiliency. The county is doing its part to lead these efforts. We have green print, which is our climate action plan, which we still use all these years later. It's still the backbone of our resiliency and our climate action work. Our hazard mitigation plan, which was just adopted, specifically calls out climate change and equity as issues. So that is something that is being adopted by all of our municipalities. The county itself has our energy, resiliency and sustainability program, which we are trying to make our actions more sustainable. We are putting our money where our mouth is. We are offsetting all of our electricity purchases with wind. We are funding a study for the Norristown Dam hydroelectric generation, whether we can power our facilities with renewable energy. We are in the process of possibly entering into an energy partnership with our neighboring counties to purchase energy more sustainably. You know, so we are doing the work that we can on a county level. We have municipalities that are adopting sustainability plans. Cheltenham was the first, followed by Collegeville, then Botstown, did in conjunction with their school district. And then Lower Marion just recently endorsed their low, their sustainability plan. And they have a hired sustainability manager. They have a staff person whose sole responsibility is the implementation of sustainability. We have thirteen municipalities that have passed ready for one hundred resolutions, where they have resolved to transition to a hundred percent renewable energy for everything, transportation, heating, cooling, electricity by 2050. So we have communities that are making these commitments. The county has made that commitment itself for our operations. The Pennsylvania has, PA has climate action goals, which we're trying to meet. DVR PC, you know, we've talked about it repeatedly, you know, it is a laundry list of projects that we are involved in, that we are working with on energy, renewable energy, climate change. You know, they are very busy and we are a partner with them in that. And this is translating planning into action. While I was on vacation last week, we are now part of a million-dollar climate action grant that DVR PC has gotten to do climate action planning for the region, and we are one of the partners on that. And they got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for our work on energy benchmarking throughout the region. So I leave, I go to Ocean City for a week and DVR PC starts rolling in money that we will be a part of, that we are on the steering committees, that we will be working with. And there are physical projects, like the ones you see here, raising houses out of the floodplain to make sure that they don't flood again, things of that nature. So we are cognizant of the issues. We're integrating it into our planning and we are doing our best to then put it into actual projects that can make a difference.
Do you have any questions before? I believe this is a new document, although it's more related than the others.
We have a lot of questions. Are there additional questions on what John just went through?
Yeah, John, the only, I'm sorry, I didn't even. The only question I had, do you have an idea how Abington is using that study they did for the, yeah, the, it was the trees canopy?
Not firsthand. Yeah, I just, you know, I've talked to Suman and all, but who is on the A C and one of the, the drivers. If you look at the plan, it talks about, it has action items of things that they would like to do. Increasing the tree canopy and out, you know, an O and M schedule for the, the tree canopy that they do have. Outreach to private landowners, you know, because a lot of the tree canopy is on private land. And how do you try to encourage people not to chop down their tree, you know, because they get tired of raking leaves and things of that?
Okay. I'm just curious, is, you know, what they're going to do with this?
Do you know, John, one thing I remember from years ago, when we looked at the whole county, when we were first doing open space planning, I was really surprised that when you get up in a plane and you look at the county when it's leave-out time, that the eastern part of the county is much, looks much greener than the western part because of the established communities like Cheltenham and Abington and Lower Marion and their street trees. And people don't recognize that a lot of those street trees need to be careful, but a lot of them are aging out. And unless you consider maintenance and replanting, that, that texture of your community is going to be lost. And I think in a community like Cheltenham, that's really an important component of what they're looking at.
Yeah, it, there's, it's going to be extremely important to have like a succession plan because you have these beautiful street trees, which are just getting towards the end of their natural life. And then how do you have a program to remove them, remove the stump safely, and then plant an appropriate species? And that may be different now than it was when it was planted. And if we're smart, we're going to think about, well, what is the climate going to be like ten years, twenty years from now, and let's plant the right tree today that will be able to, to adjust and survive to a hotter weather environment moving forward.
All right.
Go ahead.
John, do you have something?
Yeah. So these are two really excellent presentations, but as a newbie, I gotta ask a question. What's, what's the purpose of Monaco twenty fifteen? What's the purpose?
Of, of the comprehensive plan? For these, for these reports?
Not these reports specifically, but what, what's the purpose of the plan? To show trends over the last decade?
Well, the, the, the plan itself, which this is only the precursor to, and the actual plan is what, what we have. Policy and goals and, you know, you know, everything across the board that relates to land use and planning for the M P C and for what we put into it. This, take, this portion of it is, is to give us the background that makes us understand and develop good policies and, and identify where policies are needed, and also identify where we do have the ability to impact or, you know, what parties, identify what parties are the implementers.
Okay, so these, the basic, I used to be a planner, so I understand like the planning process. But this is the background to Monaco twenty fifteen, which will be the con plan, which will both identify trends that have happened in the last ten years and identify solutions, strategies, whatever, for the next ten years?
Now, technically, the next, by, by year, twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years.
We will update this plan as required by state law every ten years.
Right now, we're working off in twenty thirty, five, forty, twenty forty-one. So we're
That's why I was speaking in years.
Yeah, this is going to update that to anticipate what the policy decisions and, and changes will be in the county for the ten years preceding the existing con plan.
Okay, it's really a guide also to where the county is, has responsibility, but also has taxing ability. Money comes in. What are you going to do with it? Where is it going to go? These plans really give an idea with numbers and analysis on what these issues are. And a lot of times it, it focuses where spending and programs, how they're developed and how they're implemented.
Throughout the county, not just the planning commission.
Oh, no.
Right, but they do empower both the county and municipalities and anyone who are operating within the county. This plan will empower the ability to get support, get funding, let, let others know that, yes, we, this, we've talked about this. This is our priority. We're not just
But we go for grants at the county levels, just like the municipal. We say, we have public policy saying we should do this. Will you give us, will you help us?
Okay.
To do it.
Good. John, before we go, what's the latest with the dam?
We got a meeting coming up where we're going to talk about Uh, we got a meeting coming up where we're gonna talk about the return on investment. Um, whether the, the. Capital required to build a hydroelectric facility, you know, is a good investment. So we have the pro formas.
Sounds like a good meeting.
Uh, yeah, 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 there's more, there's a lot more important people that may gonna be there. I mean, even if we, there's still options beyond us. We're opening up our checkbook and saying we're gonna build a hydroelectric facility. Um, so just because if that doesn't look great, there's still options beyond that of doing a public-private partnership. You know, through some sort of power purchase agreement, um, or possibly even getting the exemption. Which is required from FERC. And then selling the dam to a developer who will do it because they have access to different types of capital than we do. Our whole goal is to do something good with it. You know, we have a dam that sits there, water goes over it. There is the potential to help. You know, to generate electricity in a clean manner. So, you know, we're gonna, we'll pursue any opportunity we can to get that done.
Super. Thanks.
All right. Good morning again. Um, did you hear from John? In the part two of the, uh, environmental aspects for the con plan, I'll be looking at infrastructure. And utilities specifically, energy, renewable energy. Waste generation and recycling, uh, privatization of water and sewer systems as a utilities. Issue and then broadband because we weren't really sure we're broadband would be stuck in, so I ended up with it. Um, and, and again, this is just, it's identifying trends and some high level. Uh, discussion. So jumping into energy, uh, starting with, uh, photovoltaic or P V systems. And the growth of P V systems, uh, as you heard from John, we made a conscious decision in, uh, the twenty forty plan. Uncle twenty forty to integrate lean energy. Uh, and we're gonna continue doing that in twenty fifty. Last year, the commissioners passed the commitment to sustainable operations, uh, resolution. We set a goal for the county to transition to a hundred percent clean. Renewable electricity for county-owned assets by twenty thirty five. And a hundred percent renewable energy for heat and transportation by twenty fifty. And part of that also was to support municipal efforts. Excuse me, to transition towards a hundred percent renewable. Energy and what we're talking about there is, is a process known as electrification, where we're substituting fossil fuel. Uh, sources of power, coal, oil, natural gas, or electricity generated. Uh, by solar, wind, hydro and geothermal, the, the renewables. And we're, we're, and when I say we, I mean, not just the county government, but the government of the county itself. You know, are, are already involved in this. We're in the top five, um. E A counties for the amount of P V generation, you see they're forty eight, uh, megawatts. Uh, enough to power around sixty three hundred households. That's a really squishy figure, so don't. Don't quote that anywhere else. Um, it's difficult to determine how many households of megawatt service because of different regional factors. But we're also in the top five for the number of systems, uh, three, over three thousand. Systems in, in the county and you see here, this is a picture of IKEA's rooftop over in the Plymouth area. Their showroom on the right and their administrative offices on the left all have photovoltaics cells on the top. And this is, this is becoming more and more typical, using the rooftop for a, um. A solar energy, uh, facility, uh, at commercial, institutional and, and even residential properties. This chart, uh, shows the growth of P V systems in Montgomery County from two thousand five on. Uh, the size of the dot, if you can't read the numbers, the size of the dot gives you an indication of how many systems were built that year or installed that year. And then running along the bottom is a, um. Excuse me, cumulative, uh, cumulative capacity of the si- the systems represented. Um, and this largely is in a result of government support. Uh, there are two programs in Pennsylvania, uh, to support the development of residential. Solar systems, there's the net metering, which allows the owner to sell back excess. Electricity to the utility, uh, and then also the, what's called the S Racks or the solar renewable energy certificates. Which, uh, are then sold to, uh, sold on the open market. In twenty twenty one, they were going for between twenty four and forty one dollars. So it's not. You're not gonna make, uh, you know, a huge windfall from them, but they are, that is an incentive. Um, there is a federal program, the residential clean energy credit, but there's a lot of strings. Typical of any federal program, there's a lot of strings attached to that and it sort of limits. Eligibility, but it does exist. And then on the non-residential side, the county's. Uh, C P A's program, uh, commercial property assessed clean energy program. Enables property owners to, uh, obtain low cost, long-term financing. To install, say, a solar P V system on their property. And then there's an assessment that's placed on the property and they pay it back, they pay back, uh, through their taxes. So it's a little more palatable. And it can provide a hundred percent of the funds upfront. And that program, John's been involved, where's John? Or it's been around for two years now?
I think it's two years.
So, and, and we have had some, uh, some interest in it in the non, on the non-residential side. So we are seeing photovoltaic systems and increase of them. Uh, used to be kind of looked at as kind of like the, uh, the fringe people were putting those on, but now it's, it's, it's pretty, um. It's becoming pretty standard.
So that was, so I, it's interesting because I was looking into, I have, uh.
Right.
I have my house and then I have my. Let's property next door, which has two rental units, but then has basically a half acre of just empty land. And looking at putting solar panels on the ground. Um, but Pennsylvania is so far behind in the incentives.
And that's a proper award, electric vehicles, I mean, it's.
Yeah, compared to our, you know, surrounding.
The legacy of coal.
As much as you might want to talk about the incentives and stuff, but it's. So it lags for residential.
You're right, it, it does. And there's, and there's regulations and so on that prevent, you know, I think the utilities. You know, are protective of, of their turf and they don't want to see a lot of large-scale private individual. Uh, systems.
Right. So.
The reality, the reality is it's, there's not a lot, but there's, there's some, there's some incentive.
I mean, I'm looking at it and most of my evaluation on doing it is purely based on just the environmental.
Doing the right thing.
Not necessarily what I'm getting back from it. So if I was gonna go ahead and do it, um. And try to also reduce the cost of the rent of the, the tenants because they could, you know, depending on how much. Power can be generated from that, whether it offsets the, a, a fair amount of the energy use in both my property and the rental units.
And I've heard similar sentiments from, you know, friends and others that we've spoken to. It's some, for some people, they, you know, triggered for them. Because they went to electric vehicles and, okay, the solar can now power my vehicle. I can not only eliminate my gas, but eliminate the much lower expense that I would be paying for the electric. They have to start to combine things. And it's really unfortunate that, you know, at the state level, Pennsylvania is so far behind. But those are the decisions that people are having.
And the money in the infrastructure bill and the, and the inflation recovery act, amount of that money is meant for. That long-term incentives, it's really meant for building the infrastructure and stuff like that, which is more of a one-time cost. Right. To a longer term, uh, rebate or incentive process program.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Steve, your observation is right that. You know, the, the folks that are doing this, the companies that are doing this, you know, they're doing it. In part to save some money, but also the P R is, is big, where they're doing it because it's the right thing. I was talking to a. An owner of a, a horse farm out in, uh, more than New Hanover Township. And they started with, uh, solar on their, uh, rooftop of their house and they saw the decrease in their energy system. They thought, well, I can put it on the barn too. So they added barn. A few years later, and, and then they, they, they actually built a covered, uh, walkway between their house and their barn and then put. Solar panels on top of that because they, they just want to support solar. They think it's the right way to go and so on. And they're not getting a lot of money back from. The government for their investment and they're, they're saving money on their electric bill, but it's not like they're gonna. Buy the, the farm next door just on their savings from electricity. It's, there's not a lot of incentive in that, in that as well. Um, moving on to electric vehicle charging stations, you mentioned electric vehicles. Um, there's three hundred and thirty two publicly accessible, uh, chargers, uh, in the county. And that was, that's twenty twenty two data. Uh, and that's chargers of all different types, levels one through three, Tesla, non-Tesla. It's just publicly accessible, uh, chargers. And, and it's, it's interesting. It's always been kind of a chicken and an egg thing. You put the chart from, from a government perspective, do you put the charger in hoping to encourage the purchase of. Electric vehicles or do you wait until the density of. Electric vehicles in an area is large enough to support a public charger. Uh, and we've always kind of had that discussion. And what we're finding is that the, um, the, the. Non, the, the private sector is sort of, uh, uh, stepping in and we're seeing. Uh, banks of chargers at the, the mall or, or at, you know, Giant is, is one that's.
Yeah, the outlets, the.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're putting them in, in areas where people, they want to attract customers and have them stay. I mean.
A partnership, it's just become a partnership.
On, on the, the public sector side, you know, we've been putting, we've seen them going in at municipal buildings. At libraries where people, you know, might spend some time and, and then charge their vehicles. But the, the, the private sector is trying to attract customers. And, you know, and, and there is a P R thing too as, as well. And it is partnerships, Tesla is partnering with a number of, of. Uh, many companies in the area. Uh, so we're seeing the, the, the private sector kind of step up the.
Full food chargers is the biggest problem.
What's that?
Full food chargers.
Oh, yeah.
Because as the, as, as the E V market changes and you don't just have like sedans like. Vessels, you're starting to get S U Vs that can tow. If they're towing and they want to recharge their car or their vehicle, they have to dismount the trailer. So they can get into the charging spot or else the trailer sticking out in the middle of the pass lane.
That's interesting. I, I thought we were talking about.
Well, and the other issue, even without hauling something, is there's no consistency in the E V vehicles. So in the placement of the charging location. So the way, I mean, we have an E V, we just made a trip three hundred fifty miles to Western Pennsylvania. And we had to plan a very specific route. You get to a set of chargers, either you have to make sure they're working. But there's also the issue with the way the vehicle needs to position themselves. They can sometimes have to block the next charger. Beside them and then another driver can't use it. We went into a jockeying situation. At a location on our way home and luckily we weren't in a dire situation, but one of the drivers was. That he was in a position where he had to charge at this location. Or he wasn't going to be able to get to the next charger, which is really the lack of public infrastructure. Which is involved in the infrastructure bill, but. I think that, uh, you know, discussion of what comes first, I think we now in Pennsylvania find ourselves very far behind. Because the, on the public side, they did not push the infrastructure first. And now, over the next two to three years, you're gonna see so many E V vehicles out from the major car manufacturers. And we are way behind on infrastructure.
There's, there's a famous.
Same.
No. Tesla's proprietary, the other vehicles have all adopted the European standard.
And we are seeing, we are seeing some movement towards, uh, like standardization of those things, which is a good thing. Because you can then use.
Yeah, most of the vehicles coming out are standardized.
Yes, Tesla has recently made deals with Ford and G M. That they're going to provide, they're gonna have to purchase them, but they're gonna provide the adapters. And allow them to use their chargers. So there is more opening up of those things as well.
There's a, there's a, there's a picture that's been out on social media of somebody in a Tesla that pulled up to a charger. Going to what Nicole said, and, you know, the charger for, for the cars in the back. Driver's side and the car pulled all the way up onto the curb and half of the car in the grass. I mean, it's the person stupid because all they had to do was turn around.
But some vehicles, it's in the very front. So I don't know, the Ford truck is in the very front. It, it just, it causes the way that they're developing, especially in these private. Partnerships at the Wawa's and the Sheets is the way that they're constructing the infrastructure. It's not the most conducive layout to accommodate all the vehicles. And it's just a challenge to deal with because there isn't consistency.
If, if it's built into a new construction, they can take into account that can kind of configuration and they have a template that they can use. To make sure that there is access. But if you're retrofitting a Wawa or something like that and there's not a lot of land. Uh, and, and it conflicts with the air pump that everybody uses because it's free. You know, you've got some, you've got some issues there. Alrighty, uh, and then lastly, in terms of, you know, government and our role, um. Uh, we are, um. We feel that the issues surrounding renewable energy, electrification, and even greenhouse gas reduction. Are best addressed at the regional level and therefore we participate with D V R P C and the neighboring. Counties on a number of, um, issues. Our role specifically, Montgomery County is, is looking mostly at energy conservation overlay. Uh, ordinances and so on. We, we're participating with D V R P C to support the development of renewable energy in our region. Um, one area of focus is to, is to reduce, you know, work to reduce what's called the soft costs. Involved, uh, in putting P V systems on a building. Excuse me, soft costs of the non-hardwear. Cost, they're not, it doesn't include the panels, but it includes permitting fees and inspection fees and installation and, and. Utility interconnection and so on. And that can be as much as sixty percent of the cost of the system. And so anything that local governments can do to streamline that and to make it, uh, less, um, less expensive, less time consuming. Is going to encourage, uh, the use of P V systems, um. Within the, the, within that municipality. Um, we, we participate with Soul Smart, Soul Smart's a national, um. Designation program that provides a framework for municipalities, uh, counties and regions to reduce those soft costs. And take action, become more supportive of P V, uh, in their communities. And then D V R P C has. Uh, the Alternative Energy Ordinance Working Group. Uh, which brings together, you know, leaders from, uh, the counties and municipalities to support safe and sound development. You know, early on in this, in, in the use, when we saw P V's using, uh, increasing. One of the issues that was identified is that people's systems went to the edge of their rooftops. And in the case of a fire or some other emergency, when you need to get access to the roof, it was in the way. So. You know, who knew? So now there's ordinances that say it's gotta be a certain setback from the edge. And we have checklists, I don't know if you can, you really probably can't see that very well, but there's checklist to help. Make sure the municipality looks at all the issues they need to look at. And then lastly, as you heard from John, there's the Southeast P A Sustainable Energy Partnership. Which is looking at, uh, regional, uh, solar power purchase. Uh, and we're entering, I think we're at a point where we're entering into an M O U with the other counties to pursue that. But it, it, it makes the most sense to do this cooperatively on a regional basis. Alright, moving on to waste generation and recycling. Um. Montgomery County, uh, maintains, uh, a municipal waste management plan. I've talked to you about this in the past. We have to update it every ten years and our next update is twenty twenty five. So we're looking to coordinate between. The comprehensive plan and the municipal waste management plan. Um, the municipal waste management plan has, has two. Main requirements. We have to demonstrate that adequate disposal capacity. Has been contracted with at the various disposal sites. And to accommodate the municipal solid waste we generate for the next ten years. Uh, we have the Cobanta plant, which is just, uh. There is, just here. That's our one facility, uh, in, in the county. Uh, it's, it's privately operated. Um, the twenty nine facilities currently listed in the plan and the top five or six are all within fifty miles, but the others. Are a hundred miles or more away. Some of them are in West Virginia. And all of that, uh, translates to cost of municipal waste, uh, management. And also there's a, there's a greenhouse gas emissions upon it as waste travels farther and farther. It, it travels more than I do during the two years. So it's, uh, it's, it's an issue. Um, one of the things we identified in the last municipal waste management plan is that, uh. Annually, uh, the average household generates about one point one five tons of municipal solid waste a year. So we need to plan for the adequate disposal of that. Um, the other side of the plan is to maximize recycling. One of the things we're looking at is, uh, how, how we can encourage recycling. Recycling's been around for a while. And you know, when programs have been around for a while. They need to be constantly, uh, re-energized and, and re-promoted. Um. That's illustrated here, uh, in. That's illustrated here uh in this chart, the top line here is population, you see the population of Montgomery County is rising. Uh slowly, this is municipal solid waste generation which fluctuates. But in general, this is the trend line and it's growing faster than the population, so we're generating more waste. Per person and the recycling line, which again recycling rates fluctuate, but here's our trend line, it's relatively flat. So as waste grows and recycling remains flat. Our percentages uh dropping and we're recycling less uh less waste. We need to see what we can do to um promote that, not only to prolong the capacity in the facilities. The disposal and processing facilities, uh but also there's there's a a significant reduction in uh. Greenhouse gas uh generation uh through recycling. Uh the avoidance of disposal in the landfill and in the waste energy plant. That reduces greenhouse gas uh production. Um other issues, electronics recycling, Pennsylvania does not have an effective law to require all. Uh all electronics need uh to be recycled, there's a, there's a gaping loophole that allows manufacturers to recycle a portion. And then say that they've met DEP's requirements and they and they uh they stop. So a lot of electronics are not being recycled, they're being stockpiled uh or disposed of uh. In opposition to regulations.
Drew, why do you think the recycling? Hasn't picked up, is it a public relations thing, is it the cost of recycling and what they can get from recycled materials, do you have a notion there?
The the markets, the markets are, it's a really. Complex question, Jonathan, the the markets tend to fluctuate and every once in a while, just the the bottom drops out. A few years ago, uh China said they were no longer going to accept mixed. Uh paper from the United States, they were the biggest outlet for uh our mixed paper. Uh they said, we're not gonna, there's too much contamination, there's just not, you know, we're not gonna accept mixed paper. The public is used to uh throwing everything into the recycling bin or at at most. All the, all the paper types go in one bin and everything else goes in one, it's commingled. And that makes it very easy for them to recycle, but because of the contamination. You don't get a lot of money for that product, if we if we separate it, if you remember at the beginning of these programs years ago. You know, people would have three or four bins that they would put out, aluminum, glass, and so on. Having that somewhat clean stream. The municipality got more money or the the hauler got more money uh for it, but now that everything's mingled together, it's. It's difficult to to get a good price for it and that, there's no real strong incentive. To continue, uh and part of it is just, it's been around for a while, we need to really push it again, if you remember again, when the program started, we were in the schools. Kids were going home and bugging their parents and saying, you gotta recycle that, you know. Now, you know, and the part of it too is is a bit of confusion. Like I come to work here and I can throw some some things in the recycling bin that I go home, I can't. Because we have different haulers, so it's like, can I do this, can I not, and people are like, I have to get, I'll just throw it away. So there's a number of issues and and we'll try to address those in the waste plan, but we want, we want to coordinate with the comprehensive plans.
Drew, I don't want to interrupt you, you have a couple. That first slide that you had would be that that one, what exactly is that sign telling?
I'm sorry, uh I should, I should have explained that, under Act one oh one, based on population sheer numbers or density. Act one oh one requires a municipality to have a recycling program. And those are the green municipalities there, based on either sheer numbers or population density, they're required to have a mandated program. Some municipalities that aren't want mandated have placed a ordinance, have adopted an ordinance that requires recycling within their municipality. And those are the ones shown in blue, and then there are others that have a voluntary program, and the the point of this was to show that. Every municipality in the county has some level of recycling, but they might not be mandated, it might not be by ordinance, but they have. Some level of recycling program.
My question about. Wait, waste haulers right now has been one that. I was made aware of when Pat Mascara was on the board and it's really got focused on it, is the communities that have multiple haulers. The fact, and we're going through it right now in Marlboro where our hauler was sold, when a lot of people use. And was bought by another company that just is not picking up the trash.
Yeah.
And maybe here I was the same thing, but the reality.
Is that Bluzensky?
Bluzensky. But the reality is, we're on some, some of my friends live on much more, we're all rural and more motownship, but even more rural. They have five haulers coming up their their dirt roads. Talk about waste of energy and environmental pollution and they have different, it's awful.
It is.
We have. In Laysville, we have.
Lower Pots Grove has a single hauler is awesome, but we also own a home in Upper Pots Grove and it's every man for himself. Our home is on a small alley, it's gravel, it's been destroyed because there are five different haulers that come through every day of the week, it's absolutely ridiculous.
Try this, go go to, go to your municipal meeting. That you go to a single hauler system and the residents say, ah, you're taking away my freedom of choice.
But but in Lower Pots Grove, my single system is half the price.
System is so much better, but it's the perception is, oh, the municipality is in the pocket of the hauler. Oh, they're gonna, you know, once they get a monopoly, they're gonna raise the rate. And 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 there's a lot of perception that goes against the single hauler system, but it's so much better environmentally and economically.
But what it does to these roads, these small towns that have to maintain these roads, when you have six, you now you have a separate one. You have, might have five haulers, but they might have somebody for recycling and somebody for trash, it's insane.
It is, it is.
So it is a concern.
And it's, you know, it's not just the the impact to the roads, it's the impact to the community, I I live in Schoolville Township in Chester County and it's, I'm in a very quiet neighborhood. The one thing that drives me nuts is that almost every morning of the week, early in the morning. There's some trash truck banging down the street and it, it's just, it's noise and it's irritating. So thank you for letting me in.
So you talked about that, yes, that's something that should definitely be exercised with the with the campaign, because I will tell you that. I have to bang my head against the counter to get my kids to figure out. Where they should be putting recycling and it's it's astonishing to me that they.
Yeah.
Can't figure it out or don't want to figure it out.
I I have one of my three kids that is constantly, I'm constantly digging his stuff out of the trash and putting it in the recycling bin. And no matter how many times I tell him, he's like, ah, it doesn't matter. So it's 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 not so much knowing what to do, it's knowing why it's important to do it and that should be a a real promotional thing that we can, we can have.
Especially conscious, it's just, it's just.
Not fair.
Dom.
And 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 we need, I I, you know, I think we need to focus again on on. Younger kids and and.
But use their, use their language, it's not, you know, sending out a mail or putting something on Facebook, they're never gonna say it. The county or the whoever's.
Are you volunteering to make a TikTok video?
I'm just putting it out there.
I'm not, I'm not with the language, so I'm not, I would not be politically correct.
John is dying, John is dying to get into the 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 social media thing, he wants to do TikToks.
So I can make a TikTok fan.
I guess.
Making kids not dumb.
I think that's a real, I was gonna. He can use the green screen. We've got a setup for you.
Yeah, yeah.
Really truly comes back to the whole reality of when we do the comprehensive plan, are we gonna have some younger people having some input? I'm not asking, I know that's always a difficult thing, but at some point.
Don't see what we just think about, how how how.
I don't know.
That it, they'll have input as long as we can put it on like TikTok.
Check out to the junior high school or high schoolers to put together a recycling social media campaign, I think that's what we need to know.
You know, DEP does do contests uh for recycling and so on and that's, you know, we.
Let's put in the hands of the people who know what they're doing and it's not any generation.
No, 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 but it's a great thing, I mean, there are environmental clubs, there are, it's for the county, it's great political capital.
We just had BG school, middle.
Amazing.
School yesterday and those students are F and incredible. I mean, middle schoolers were talking to us like we were the kids and they were the adults about having this and this with.
Rain guard.
Tribes with the rain guards, with the trees, it was spectacular, so don't say, I think you got a real good idea there.
Well, one of the things I have found though, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna paint with too broad a brush, one of the things I've found is that, you know, youth is just like. Just like the rest of us, there are youth that are super involved in that, super knowledgeable and and very passionate about that, there's others. That it just doesn't matter and we have to reach everybody. I saw a statistic and I thought this was really interesting, I'm talking about litter and looking at the age. You know, different age groups and and who litters and who's the, who's. The rate of litter from this age group is rising the fastest. The, I guess the most litters, and you know who it was? Anyone want to take a guess?
Eighteen to twenty five.
No, it was even younger than that and it was specifically females. Teenage girls had the least interest in, and that again is painting with a very broad brush, because I'm sure there's a lot of very active. People out there, but that was the age group that litter rates were rising the fastest in, and I thought, well, why in the, why? You know, so we have to understand the issue and then we have to try to address it. And we have to move on. Moving on, privatization of water and sewer systems, uh we maintain a sewage facilities and a water facilities database. At the time of our last update, there were forty three municipal sewage treatment plants. And seventeen municipal and private water suppliers and since that time, five sewer systems have been purchased, five. Municipal sewer systems have been purchased by private uh water companies, namely Pennsylvania American and Aqua PA. This map shows the red lines are the sewer lines and that sort of gives you an idea of what's sewed and and what isn't in the county. And then the dots are systems that have been for purchase and the purply ones are Pennsylvania, or excuse me, Aqua. PA and they purchased Limerick and East Norton and Cheltenham's uh collection system, since Cheltenham doesn't have a uh. Waste water plant, and then the lighter blue is Pennsylvania American Water Company. Upper Pots Grove, same deal, they they purchased their collection system and then Rothersford. And then the two green ones are uh Tom Enson and Narstown, these systems were proposed for purchase. But because of uh public opposition to the proposal, uh the proposal was withdrawn. So we're seeing some interest in this and then we're seeing that there's some controversy related to it and what it all comes down to is uh Act twelve. Which was passed in two thousand sixteen and it was promoted as a way. Uh to put small financially struggling water and sewer systems into the hands of private companies that could afford then to fix them. Bring them up to code uh and prevent environmental violations, before Act twelve. Private utilities could uh purchase, could only purchase distressed municipal systems. Added depreciated book value, after Act twelve, they can target well-run, financially secure. Uh systems and offer greater than market rates for those systems, so it's very attractive to the municipality, it's a windfall. But it's a windfall often on the backs of rate payers. And not only the local rate payers, but in some, in some cases, we were talking about, you know, Pennsylvania America and Aqua PA. You know, rate payers outside absorbing some of the costs of purchase of systems in the county, so it's 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 a. It's something that falls on the, on the, on the backs of the rate payers.
I would say I've had the opposite experience with this versus the trash. We are in Upper Pots Grove and it was purchased and this year the rates went through the roof.
Rates went through the roof, right, and that's, that's uh.
We knew that was gonna happen, but people were so happy about this windfall of money the township was gonna get, township wants to do all these great things with it, that's wonderful. But open your eyes, people, and it's exactly what we knew would happen, the rates were through the roof.
And and the, just a, the cost of the systems that were purchased ranged from thirteen million to seventy five million, so it's a pretty big range what what gets paid. And it's not all bad, uh you know, the private companies can afford to fix up the systems, they can address water quality issues like PFAS, you know, possibly better than municipal systems. But the rating Chris, the rate increase is an issue and often the agreement, purchase agreement contains a um. Uh a rate stabilization period where they say, okay, three years, we're not gonna raise the, raise the rates or five years, we're not gonna raise the rate, but after that. It goes up and and Limerick, just recently, their rates went up eighty percent.
I think ours was fifteen.
Yeah, and people hear that and they they panic, you know, and and uh, you know, part of this gets back to that idea of equity that John brought up. There are people that, you know, if their, if their rates go up a hundred, two hundred dollars a year, you can absorb that, other people can't as easily. The other issue, and it has to do more with land use planning and comprehensive planning, is that now these these purchase systems are run more like a business. I mean, sure, the municipality has land use control and there's the whole planning module uh process with with DEP. But bottom line is that company, if 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 their wastewater treatment plant has excess capacity, that's money that's not coming in. So they're looking to maximize their customer base and that somewhat, that provides tension with land use policies and and so on. And and one, one hand is trying to extend systems and the other is trying to hold it back, so there's, there's that land use tension that that occurs.
So in our map up there, all that white area is privately sewed.
Uh yes, this is a a little outdated, but but yes.
So those people may have to unlock sewer systems and. The other map I want to see is the public water. Because the issue is where like I was, I was always wonderful, I had a public uh sewer and I had a well. Till I understood that here I'm taking all the water out and putting it down perky omen, okay? You know, and nothing's getting recharged.
Yeah, the 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 existing comprehensive plan requires or 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 promotes concurrent provision of public water and sewer to avoid just that.
You try to, you try to get uh a public water in the Yunnami, you're gonna, I used to say you're gonna hang pipes on the trees.
Yeah, but the interesting thing to bring up with this white area is, you know, years ago, municipalities relied on the poor soils, the rocky, you know, Yunnami with the boulders.
No, see, no more.
But the technology has advanced to the point where you can put a system pretty much anywhere. You know, they've got drip irrigation systems and AV systems that alternate and so on and uh there's a. I saw a system go in in um. I'm sorry, I guess it's new hand of attention, uh there's, there's, you know, diabase boulders and sticking up in their front yard. And and they managed to get a system in that provided sewage treatment for that house, so. Uh anyway. Again, more towards the the planning issue, uh looking at the age of municipal sewage facilities plans. DEP requires that the plan be maintained, updated every ten years and most of the plans are out of date. So even if the comprehensive plan in the municipality has uh you know, changed, so that they're promoting reservation of open space or. Preserving of character or or just trying to develop, excuse me, direct growth. To appropriate areas, if their plan, their sewage facilities plan, doesn't show that growth area. That zoning and comprehensive planning supports, then you know, then it's, they're fighting themselves. So most of the plans are out of date and that needs, that needs to be addressed, that's not something I think that we can really get involved in. We did do the original plan for the county back in the seventies, but since then, every municipality. Uh main, except for, except for Marw, I don't believe that there's a municipal wastewater treatment uh plan. For Marlboro, they're still relying on the base plan with some updates. But we gotta get, we have to do what we can do. Okay, um just to move on really quick, broadband and internet, when I say broadband. I'm I'm really referring to high-speed internet connection, uh this is not a map of broadband accessibility, if I showed you a map of broadband accessibility. The county would all be one color, but every map I've seen that showed. Broadband accessibility shows the county is one color and then down in the bottom has a caveat that says. Uh the fact that broadband is shown as being available in a geographic area means only that one address, at least one address in that area has broadband. It doesn't mean everybody in that area has broadband and so this is a map showing that index of uh potential disadvantage. That that John mentioned earlier and there are pockets of. Populations, neighborhoods that are potentially disadvantaged due to things like economic status or gender or race or. Any number of language variation or whatever, uh and of course, this could be a choice thing, I mean, you could have, you know, an eighty-year-old. And of course, this could be a choice thing. I mean, you could have, you know, an eighty-year-old man, crabby like me. So I don't wanna get on the internet. I'm not gonna, you know, that's a choice, that's fine. But there are other people, you know, maybe you're looking for a job. Uh, having access to the internet helps that. Uh, maybe you've got kids and the school has sent them home for one reason or another and they've gotta continue uh, online. But if you don't have access, that's an issue. Maybe you've got health issues, health questions, and you're looking for answers online. Having that connection to the internet is very important. I'll wrap this up. Montgomery County population eight hundred fifty-six thousand, seven percent of that is below poverty level. That's sixty thousand people. Uh, so economically, that could be a hardship for them. The census data show that households with a computer, ninety-five percent. Another way of saying that is five percent don't have a computer. Ninety-two percent have an internet subscription or eight percent does not. They, um, again, if, if they are looking for support of one way or another, and they don't have access to the internet, they are, they are hampered. Nationally, this, a lot of this data only exists at national level. This is, I found interesting. Nationally, twenty percent of the American population were, were, uh, excuse me, of the American population that's identified as white, non-Hispanic people lacked broadband connections and the device compared to thirty-six percent of black, non-Hispanic people and thirty percent of Hispanic people. So there's either a direct correlation there with race and accessibility, or there's an intervening factor that is complicating the issue, but something we need to look into as the comprehensive plan explores equity on, you know, all fronts, which, you know, uh, I've been encouraged by Anne that we need to do that. So uh, any questions to wrap this up? I went a little long. Right. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, Anne.
Okay.
There we go.
Hi, tell, and last but not least, recognize that we're probably short on time at this point, but, um, we talked a little bit about health already in that uh, it is important to discuss how it connects to the way we use our land, right? Um, so it's already come up in several ways today. Uh, just in the the way we talk about contamination and properties that have been tainted by the industrial uses that have been on them previously. We have eighteen superfund sites here in the county. And some of them have been cleaned up, some are in the process of being cleaned up. They're, they're potentially attractive for development in the future. But how do we, how do we ameliorate those, those sorts of risks? We talked about heat and vulnerability already. Uh, so I won't go into that again. We've also talked about the importance of, of walkability and where we uh, put sidewalks and trails and giving people the ability to go out and and enjoy recreational opportunities. Which leads me to talk a little bit about physical health, important for, for people, important for people and their pets as well. And that's the image on the right.
Those tires.
Um, I wonder what was that? I mean, it's not Delfi's why.
Um.
That's not my why.
No, it's not your why?
No, mine. Not, not my why.
This is an, an annual, um, dog, bring your dog to the pool event. But I, but my point being.
We, we do it every year. So last week, so we close the pool. The day after we close the pool, we have the puppy plunge and then we clean the pool.
So that, that might make sense. That makes sense.
Yeah.
I'm not swimming last.
Thank you very much.
Point is to say that our physical health collective is really important. Um, and, and staying healthy is important and having opportunity. Healthy is important. Um, we are the fourth healthiest county in Pennsylvania, depending on who you ask. Chester County is number one. Um, and, and there are lots of numbers and statistics that I could throw at you, but, um, I won't, I won't bore you with those. I've already had a lot of numbers in today's presentation. Uh, but there are disparities in, in our health statistics. For example, in Norristown, though, and, and Pox Town as well, the life expectancy for people who live in these communities is lower than it is countywide. It's lower for men than it is for women. And, and interestingly, um,
I think it inspires me.
I think so. Um, in any case, um, there are a lot of public health things that I could go into here. Our obesity prevalence in the county is twenty-one, twenty-nine point one percent. I'm sure that's a number that goes up over time. But yet there are also good things to point out. Our child asthma hospitalization rate is down, infant mortality rate is down. Um, our ER utilization rate is down. So that may have more to do with the availability of other types of healthcare. Um, but we'll talk about that in a couple minutes. Uh, mental health, I think, is also something that is more and more recognized as being a, a serious public health concern. Um, these are statistics from the Pennsylvania Youth Survey. Uh, this is information that was shared with us from our public health staff here. And it was honestly not something that I knew existed and it's kind of depressing. Um, but this is a, a long, a longitudinal survey being that is given to sixth, eighth, tenth, and twelfth graders each year. Um, so the, the, this data is from twenty twenty-one, when I'm assuming a lot of kids were still learning from home and isolated, right? Um, so it was a tough time, I think, to be a kid here. And so there are serious mental health concerns that, that this survey brings up. That the risk of suicide was up, that there were concerns about depression. Um, so like, I don't wanna dwell on this, but it's, it's worth noting and worth taking into consideration when we think about how we plan for, for youth and the kinds of activities that are available for kids to, to take part in, the kinds of community centers, places for kids to gather. It, it may seem trivial, but, but having the ability for kids to get out and enjoy themselves and get get together with each other is important, not just for kids, but also for adults as well. Um, the, um, there, you know, we talked, I guess, last month about how we have an increasing number of single-person households in the county. Uh, and so thinking about isolation and, and depression overall as a mental health concern, I think, is something that we should be taking into consideration going forward. Food insecurity and hunger is also a factor in our health. Um, the percentage of households receiving SNAP benefits has gone up over time. Um, these, these numbers are a little bit dated, but these are census statistics. And then as well, um, there are equity concerns here as well. Seven percent of the county's population is considered food insecure. USDA defines food insecurity as a lack of consistent access to enough food for every person in a household, live an active, healthy life. Um, these are numbers from Feeding America, I believe. But yet the, um, the counties, there are fifteen percent of the county's black population is food insecure and sixteen percent of the county's Hispanic population is food insecure versus four percent of the county's white population. Uh, and these numbers, I think, date to twenty twenty, uh, so potentially pre-pandemic. I'm, I'm sure that these numbers have gone up over time, um, anecdotally in working with some of the food pantry providers here as they've been working towards a, a countywide food policy council. They're all experiencing a, a raise in demand. Uh, they all have not enough food to give out and more people who are coming looking. Uh, I would say the, the COVID nineteen pandemic kind of shoved the opioid prices off to the side in terms of the, of the amount of publicity it was getting, but it's worth noting that opioid overdoses are up consistently since twenty fifteen. Uh, I believe that regionally, I'm behind in flipping my notes pages. Regionally, um, drug overdose deaths have tripled over, uh, since twenty fifteen. They're the leading cause of death among young adults in region. Uh, other causes of death are top cause of death in Montgomery County is heart disease, followed by cancer. COVID nineteen is ranked in the third position this, as of twenty twenty-two. Maybe that will edge down a little bit this year. Um, and then followed by cerebrovascular disease and chronic lower respiratory disease. Uh, last but not least, accessibility of healthcare is a really interesting topic to dive into. Um, people, people get healthcare differently than they used to. Uh, Drew mentioned, um, needing to check on your, your illnesses uh, using a broadband, you broadband connection at home, but maybe that's how you actually are talking to your doctor. Maybe you have a telehealth. Uh, we've definitely had a, an increase in ambulatory surgery centers and urgent care facilities over the last decade, I would say. Uh, we're, we're seeing more proposals for satellite medical facilities that are tied to hospitals. Uh, so I expect to see more from the map soon, but um, people go to urgent care, I think, more frequently than they might try to seek out their primary care. Uh, so with that, I'm gonna wrap things up with health. Uh, I want to give you a heads up that in September, we're gonna be talking about government and community facilities and land use trends. Uh, and I'd also like to take a moment to thank some of the behind-the-scenes work on uh, these graphics and maps that was provided by Rob Cartier and Bill McClay and Anna Thader Summers, wherever they might be at today. They've been super helpful in helping pull all this together, so I wanna make sure they get their due. And anyone who has questions, happy to answer.
Any questions for Anne?
Very thorough. I appreciate all the hearing. I still hope presentations were radically interesting.
Are we gonna solar panels on the new, um, construction across the street?
Not that I'm aware of, though. I do think that it's being made solar-ready, which means you know, that there'll be.
So Mr. Johnny's agreeing. Although it's interesting, I think that a dreamer is still in just and those two are not really.
They also kept on, they've also kept claiming that, that when it's built, it'll still use less energy than less waste. Uh, the company.
Yeah, not.
More efficient.
I'm here, sure.
Yeah, but it's the same size. So again, right?
Still a lot of size, but I think that's better used.
It's so interesting. Could you go to like all the school, all the schools that were built in the last decade and stuff? You go back and see how many of them did, you know, energy-saving things. It was really hard, so.
The energy modeling for the new justice center is that it will use half the energy that it's currently using with the existing building and the expansion.
And so you really gotta. Maybe we don't need solar if we get that.
Yeah.
Thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for the presentations today. All right, Scott, you're up.
Yep. Um, in brief, we first wanna introduce our newest staff members. Here with us today in the back. Um, I'll, I'll let our, let the managers, Mr. Patterson, Patty, do you wanna introduce her?
Sure. Uh, so I went on, so I wanted to introduce Erin Haley. She's our newly hired assistant manager of design. She comes to us with the end photography from Temple and landscape architecture from the California State Polytechnic. Um, university in, in Noma. For you. She worked in California with all the designs. She then went to Minnesota. I'm not sure why, but you know, Minnesota's a great place, but she worked in the city of Minneapolis and for an engineering firm there. And more recently has been here for the past few years, working for Twenty-Nine and Salt Design Studios. So we're lucky to have her. And she's already been indoctrinated a little bit with the board tour or the select committee tour yesterday.
She had to spend the day with us yesterday. Sorry, Erin.
Surprise Nicole and Jonathan did scare her off.
Yeah, cuz we would be the ones.
She was a good tour, even at the end.
What is in here? Uh, I'll correct it, it's Drexel.
Same, we talked, it was Drexel.
But, uh, yeah, I'm pretty much summed it up. I've kind of worked, I, I started with transportation and working and engineering and water resources and a lot of the nature-based, um, solutions going on with stormwater management. So very interesting, I think, that we're going on in this year. Um, but yeah, I'm just kinda invited to use all that. We get back, I'm originally from Hunter County, Grove and King Precious, so. Nice to.
If you live in the county?
Um, I live in Roxborough, so right over the line.
One of our reverse communities.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Thanks. And Eric, go introduce. Yeah, Tim Stout, he's the new senior community planner. Uh, he did his undergraduate work at Notre Dame, uh, then he worked, uh, Key West, uh, two and a half years as a multi-modal transportation planner. Uh, five years before that, he was with Zipcar. I didn't even back you guys' masters, just graduated from last year in Rutgers, with his master's degree. And he'll be working with Narbor. Uh, they're actually working with Bumerian on a multi-modal, uh, active transportation comprehensive plan right now. Uh, he'll also be working with Hanover, and then he'll be working with Mike in Nancea, uh, who did working on the active transportation plan there. So potentially.
Long transportation. Lucky, I guess.
It's a better job.
I wanted to go more to land use.
You're a hybrid.
Yeah, so.
Good. That's great.
So yeah, one of the things I found in Key West is that I wanted to do all this great transportation policy, but none of it would work without the land use department.
Welcome to the, welcome to the.
And I'm also happy to, we have a third, another planner joining us, uh, uh, won't start until, uh, next month, um, to Caleb Emblem, who will also be joining the community planning section as a community planner too. So I'll meet him. So we still have an open position for a senior county planner with data analyst, uh, uh, focus and senior GIS coordinator. So at least we're down to two, um, and, and working on this.
Maybe our new, our new planners have friends.
New connections.
Other news, uh, just wanna acknowledge, uh, Yvonne Montgomery is our new solicitor representative, not new to the county. She's already works with our farmland preservation board as well as our state board. Uh, so now she'll be joining us, uh, via Zoom on our monthly meetings. And outside of that, any needs we have with solicitor office. So welcome, Yvonne.
Welcome.
Welcome. Um, the, I wanna, I'm happy to, uh, this announced, it's, uh, will be publicly presented in November. The, the Pennsylvania Environmental Council is choosing to award Montgomery County in its efforts on sustainability, open space and trail development over the years. And so that award, uh, in the past has often gone to a, uh, private, uh, entity, uh, with, with work that's been done, but they wanted to award a governmental adventure in Montgomery County. Um, so we're gonna be working with them in the fall to get a, uh, they're gonna put a, make a a very professional video, um, to highlight our accomplishments and, and hear from some of the, uh, county representatives. Uh, so we'll be putting that together and then that will live on beyond your events as well.
So it'll be a November event?
Yes, their annual, uh, I don't know what they call it, uh, dinner. It's in Philadelphia. The, uh, let's see, Monaco Point Forty Grant Program, we're still talking, we're revision. So there was a, a good meeting with, uh, select municipal managers on G twenty-six, and it's very helpful to hear from them. Uh, our committee will be meeting next week on July eighteenth to circle back and talk about where, where we wanna move forward with any potential recommendations for, uh, updating that program. Uh, we also are meeting with DRCRBC on August first at staff level to talk about their fiscal year twenty-five work program ideas, which is an annual process. Uh, so we're, uh, brainstorming now for the potential projects that we wanna bring to that, that plate and get, get the feedback on. Uh, and then hopefully present. Um, we have, uh, a, a, a couple of good events coming up for the public, uh, webinars and education events. There are Planning Smarter series, uh, as well as other, uh, series. Um, the APA PA chapter, uh, has their Wednesday webinar on August second. And Montgomery County Planning Commission staff will be presenting on our TOD model ordinance in that venue. Um, our, we have our own Planning Smarter webinar even sooner on July twenty-sixth, uh, with the topic being historic preservation, uh, being led by Chloe and additional staff as well as, uh, some state, um, guests uh, to help with, uh, uh, that information. Uh, interested participants can register online at our Planning Smarter webpage of Monaco. Now, montgomerycountypa.gov slash planning. Uh, we have a new website, I guess, but the old one still works at the end of. Now, montgomerycountypa.gov slash planning, uh, we have a new website, I guess, but the old one still works at the end of it. Um, the, uh, let's see, and then our series of courses in community planning continues. Uh, we have classes set up for September fourteenth, twenty-first and twenty-eighth. And registration is online, there's a fee for that, and that's targeted to, uh, municipal officials and appointees, but open to anyone. The, uh, and then I'll skip over to some local, um, efforts, uh, going on throughout the county, uh, in the summer and fall. Uh, but Bill Hartman will be presenting to White Marsh Township on return on environment study, uh, to their council supervisors. Um, to again, keep promoting, uh, the value of that study and what it needs to, uh, that lookout. Uh, and then in August, uh, finally we go receive a notice on this as well. It's a little further out, but I think August twentieth, on a Sunday evening, we're going to, uh, have a farmers networking event. We did this last year, uh, students eventually put it together, and it was, uh, we thought it was very successful. And, and the attendees really appreciated the opportunity to both talk to each other and us. Uh, so we're gonna do that again, this time in Upper Southford, at Upper Southford Park. So we'll cross our fingers for, for good weather, uh, and last year, and, uh, hopefully see a lot of our farming community house. And welcome to getting one else to attend. And they'll, I think we'll end right there.
Thanks, Ben. Any, uh.
Parting comments from board members?
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, we will not be having an August meeting, correct?
Oh. Yes, we will not be having one again.